And Jennifer's gonna be on Zoom.
On Zoom.
So we'll, we'll see how this all works out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sparring eyes.
Okay, I'm just gonna wait just a minute here to see. Actually, I don't know this is. Your hair looks shorter than last time.
I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
I think it looks nice though. Really, it wasn't meant as a smile. You should tell them it's fun to get me on. I'll take it down.
Four oh one, we're gonna call the LAFCO meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Curro?
Here.
Commissioner Betancourt?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Here.
All five present.
Okay, and Commissioner Casey, can you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion to approve the affidavit of posting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, all opposed? So that's five oh. Um, okay, so we're gonna open it up to public comment for anything that is not on today's agenda.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, thanks so much. Okay, so um, I have a little announcement, just, this is a real quick item about CMAP. We wanna kinda explain a little bit of the changes that we've done now that we have new outside counsel and that we have um, our consultant working on MSR reviews remotely. So um, we have enhanced CMAP. CMAP is actually here with us. And if you don't know what CMAP is, it is our audio visual that goes out on Zoom uh, for the world to see. And this is gonna be a higher quality, more professional, especially with videoing and sound and archiving. You'll notice right now typically, all five of us would be on the, the, the video at the same time. Um, this is just like board meetings where when we talk, they'll zoom in on us. And it allows us, when our new outside counsel is um, via Zoom, we'll have a little, if I understand correctly, a little picture of him with a video, so he's live from there and we can see him. So um, some of the other things that this, this does is it improves our um, uh, oh yeah, I said the higher resolution, um, close up, and it's better for the archive. If you have any questions or you're noticing anything about the Zoom in the future that um, you're getting feedback from the public, please let us know. It should also be easier for them, I understand, to hear uh, because of these changes. So we do have someone from Zoom, uh, Zoom, from CMAP at every one of these meetings and um, it helps Vanessa keep us moving along. So thank you so much for that. Um, do we have any public comment regarding the CMAP?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, Commissioner Betancourt, you have a comment?
Yeah, who's paying for this?
We are paying for this and the amount. I'm gonna defer to Darren.
I believe typically it should be about two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. It's a essentially eighty-five dollars per hour and they figure three hours per meeting. That uh, allows for uh, an hour of setup and, and breakdown and then approximately two hours for the meeting. And if the meeting goes over two hours, it would be billed at eighty-five dollars per hour.
And again, if it's under, uh, under two hours, we're only charged for the time that they're here.
I believe so. I, I, I'm not sure if it's billed in fifteen minutes or a half hour or, or.
Is it in our budget?
Oh, it is not identified specifically in the budget. Uh, I, I, it, it, it may be potentially covered. Uh, it, it doesn't say CMAP in the budget. It may be potentially covered under uh, uh, one of the other line items in the budget or we may need to do a slight budget amendment in the middle of the fiscal year.
My understanding is we were gonna see uh, from our legal counsel line because we do have the money in the legal coun- and this is so we don't have to pay for travel. We don't have to pay for hotels and gas and all that. So we'll kinda see how this goes and, and work from that. If it looks like we're gonna be exceeding the budget, we'll bring it back to the commission and you guys can make the decision on.
Thank you.
There is a contingency item in the budget to cover, you know, unplanned uh, uh, changes to the, the work that we do here.
Any other commissioner questions?
Oh, I got another question. A lot of times I watch the board meetings, but it's on YouTube. Will this be on YouTube too?
Yes, the plan is to have these meetings be included in the county's YouTube channel unless and until we set up our own YouTube channel specific to the LAFCO meetings.
Great question. I did not know that, so thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of meeting minutes from August tenth, uh, twenty twenty-three. Any public comment on meeting minutes?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Okay, bringing it back to the commission, any comments or corrections on minutes?
I was gonna make a motion to approve the minutes as, as written.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So that's five oh. Okay, so now we're on to item six point two, which is new LAFCO general counsel, which is Joshua Nelson from BB and K, which is Best, Best and Kruger. I'm gonna turn it over to Josh and let you introduce yourself and have a conversation with our commission. Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Josh Nelson from BB and K, just really, really excited to be here. Um, so I will be your named um, general counsel, but working really closely with my colleague Mala Subermanian, which you may remember from the interview process we went through. Uh, just on behalf of us both and on behalf of the firm, just super excited to be here. Um, you're excited to kinda get to know everybody and hopefully help to, you know, um, as soon as we can. Um, and then on a personal level, I'm really excited to be here because my mom, Sammy, was from San Benito County. So when I was a kid, I spent a lot of time in Hollister and San Juan Batista and stuff, so excited to, to have an opportunity to come back.
That's great, that's great. Commit, um, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and I have no one on Zoom at this time.
Okay, bringing it back to the commission, anybody wanna say anything? And welcome, Josh?
Welcome.
Welcome.
We're happy you're here.
We are, we are, Josh, very happy you're here. And um, I know it took us a little time to get through the contract and everything, but we're happy to have you on board. And I feel like we're, we're ready to make some, some big changes and improvements and moving forward and with the agenda of LAFCO and making sure that we get some things accomplished.
Thank you, excited to be here.
Okay, so now we're on six point three, which is the municipal service review status report from Jennifer. Is she available now on Zoom, on uh, CMAP or do we say Zoom?
On Zoom.
On Zoom, okay.
I'm here, can you hear me?
And we can see you too.
Excellent, I see myself. Okay. Um, just a quick update on the municipal service review uh, that we had discussed at the last meeting. Um, we had our very first ad hoc meeting um, on August thirtieth with Commissioners Casey and Betancourt. Um, and have scheduled a kickoff meeting with the stakeholder agencies for September twenty-fifth. That will be at three PM at the Community Foundation epicenter. Um, we've distributed invites for that meeting as well as um, informational flyers to the stakeholders on what the MSR is and what it will entail. Um, and at the stakeholder meeting, we'll be going over quite a bit of the content that was in that flyer um, along with a couple of other things. But also at that meeting, we'll be um, distributing the very first request for information. We've um, asked for RSVPs for the meeting and so far we, four of the six agencies under review have um, RSVP that they'll be there. Um, so that will be a great turnout. Um, we've started a collection of information from each of the agency's websites as well as from some central data sources. And um, that's about it. And based on what we find um, from the agency websites, we'll be uh, compiling that request for information that we'll be distributing. So if you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay, before we open it to the commission, let's bring it to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and I have no one on Zoom. Ms. Salinas.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioner. So my only question is, um, it was reported that only six were invited. There's a longer list. Should we not have a meeting for all thirteen? So the, the meeting can only happen one time and we only have to pay the consultant one time? Even though the, our um, MSRs are not gonna go out? There's more than six. So I'm hoping just in an order, in an effort to save time, um, that the, that that would happen instead of, um, anyway, I just said it.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment?
No other public comment.
Uh, Jennifer, do you want me to respond to this or you wanna take this?
Oh, I can respond to that. Um, the focus of this MSR is wastewater services. So there are, I should say there's seven agencies, but um, two of which are CSAs. So I'm counting that as one, which would be the county as a representative. Um, so it is just these six agencies that have been invited because the focus of this MSR is specifically that, the wastewater services. Uh, the other agencies, um, the commission has yet to compile a prioritization list on um, what priority and schedule they would like to um, have for the remaining MSRs. Um, so that's, there is a list in the agenda packet, but um, I know that uh, interim EO has recommended that that be addressed at a later date once you have a permanent executive officer um, onboard.
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. Um, any comments? Commissioner Betancourt?
Is that meeting gonna be open to the public or just those uh, specific uh, people that are in the, like CSAs and things like that?
Um, the invitation is to the stakeholder agencies specifically. Um, this isn't the opportunity for public um, comment or public participation. There'll be um, other opportunities for that. Um, including um, we're going to be adding to the website um, some kind of manner in which the public can create, um, add feedback or submit feedback or comments for consideration on the MSR specifically. Um, this is just intended to prepare the stakeholders for what the process will be um, and we'll be looking at um, from them.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Thank you, Jennifer. I was just kinda looking at this suggestion by um, um, Commissioner Salinas that we do it all at once, but I understand you're just focusing on this, this aspect right now is the wastewater services. So you're inviting the entities that pertain to that issue itself, correct? Okay, so, so I understand the logic of her request, but I understand the motive of what you're doing to get all the players at the table. Um, and I just wanna say thank you that that's, this is the topic that we're starting on. Um, it's, it's something that's very crucial, it's poignant, and it's something that needs to be addressed. So I thank Mayor Casey for willing to bring it to the table to us, for us to delve into it. So thank you.
I'm gonna agree with that completely, Commissioner Casey. Uh, I appreciate all your support in bringing this forward. Um, one question, you did say, uh, unless there's another question from the commissioners, okay, sorry. Um, you did say that MSR or the CSAs are gonna be represented by the county. I am gonna take off my hat for a moment as a commissioner, cause CSAs in South County are very big. Um, two of these CSAs are very vocal. Um, when do they get to be involved in this and when do they get to be, um, the home, the property owners? So like either the HOA or the, the ones that are actually managing the sewer plants right now, um, financially? When are they gonna get to have a voice at the table?
We have yet to delve deep enough into both of them in order to understand the structure. I think one of them might actually be inactive. Um, so if there ends up being a structure for these particular two CSAs in place with, that involves um, public participation and operation, then of course at that time we'll um, be in touch with them. And solicit their input as well.
I really appreciate that. I'm putting my commissioner hat back on. I just know Cielo Vista is one of the CSAs and all of those residents call on a regular basis about this topic, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much. Is there anything you wanna add? Um, besides the meeting, uh, you said there's two agencies or stakeholders that have not responded. Is there anything you'd like us to do as a commission to help support getting them to RSVP?
Um, you know, it's only been a few days since we, since we sent out the invitation. So I think at this point it's just a, a wait and see and then we'll follow up with them at the beginning of next week um, to see where they're at. So I, I'm pretty confident that we'll have um, almost, close to one hundred percent participation.
Great, and if there's anything we can do, go ahead, Commissioner Casey.
Um, is this a mandatory invitation or is it optional that they can partake in the meeting?
Uh, I'm, it's always optional. Um, there's no way we can mandate it. But um, I think the response, um, the immediate, most immediate response, I'm talking about within minutes of sending out the invitation was yes. So um, I do know the agencies are um, very interested in um, taking part in this process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jennifer, do you wanna end with anything or are you good?
No, I'm good. I think that's all I have at this point regarding the MSR. So um, I'll come back with, at the next meeting with another update for you, okay?
I just wanna thank you so much. Um, we all know that this is a huge priority for us as a LAFCO commission and we know we couldn't do this right, right now without you, so thank you so much for taking this on. And I thank the ad hoc for moving this forward. It's really great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number six point four, which is consider adoption of a financial reserve policy. I'm gonna turn this over to our interim executive director, RCO.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. At the last few meetings, we discussed that San Benito LAFCO has not historically had a practice or a policy of setting aside any long-term uh, financial reserves to be available for unanticipated expenses such as times of financial uncertainty, um, special projects and things of that nature. Uh, uh, up until now, basically whatever money was left over at the end of any given fiscal year, uh, essentially it got rolled into and applied to the next fiscal year's annual budget. Uh, kind of reducing the, the amount that needed to be contributed by the um, uh, by, by the agencies that, that pay LAFCO's budget. In June of this year, in adopting a final budget for the current fiscal year, uh, the commission directed staff to the effect that, hey, basically we want to take a different approach, uh, establish a long-term reserve account, which has been done. And uh, also directed staff to come back with some policy options for capping the new reserves at a uh, preset dollar amount or a percentage of the annual budget. At the last month's meeting, the commission appointed a two-member ad hoc committee, uh, Commissioners Curro and, uh, and Jordan to meet with uh, staff, review some different options and ideas, and draft a policy to recommend to the full commission. Uh, so that brings us to where we are today. That's uh, what your committee has done. That's what we have uh, before you in your packet on pages twenty-seven to twenty-eight. This is a draft policy um, establishing that this uh, new reserve account is intended to be a general reserve. It's not uh, uh, you know, earmarked for any specific purpose. It's for those general kinds of uh, things I mentioned just a minute ago, uh, how, whatever needs may arise in the future. Uh, this reserve account would be capped at approximately fifty percent of the adopted annual budget. And then anything accruing in the account above and beyond that would be credited to offset the next year's budget, as is the case now, basically. The recommended draft policy that you have before you today uh, would require a four fifths vote of the commission to either move money out of reserves and into an operating account or to change that fifty percent target uh, maintenance level uh, for the reserve fund. Uh, so uh, that's basically the, the, uh, long story short, that's the recommended policy that you have before you today. Uh, staff is recommending adoption of this policy. Um, however, after uh, taking public comment and uh, commission discussion, the, the commission could provide other direction. Thank you.
Okay, can I open it to public comment, please?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card and I have no one on Zoom. And I have no public comment.
Okay, bringing it back to the commission. Any concerns? I, I wanna thank Commissioner um, Jordan for being on this with me. I will say this was the fastest ad hoc I've ever been on in my life and I have only been doing this for about nine months, but we were thirty minutes, I think, start to finish.
I think so.
Yeah, and, and the only concern that we wanted to make sure the commissioners know that you guys can change is that we've discussion of the four fifths vote versus three fifths vote. And if you're comfortable with the fifty percent um, balance amount before it, it goes back and, and to the, to the payees of LAFCO. Any comments? Commissioner Betancourt?
It concerns me when we get a large sum of money in the kitty, if you may call it that. I don't understand why we have to have a large sum of money sitting in a kitty. Um, what for?
Darren, do you wanna talk about kinda LAFCO policies and, and kinda what other LAFCOs have done and why this came up?
Yeah, uh, it's pretty common practice for a, a, a public agency to have some reserves set aside. You know, we, uh, at the committee level, uh, we looked at some different examples. Uh, there is a range out there, a lot of different approaches. Uh, some LAFCOs have it broken up into different reserves for different kinds of purposes. Uh, it's pretty typical for there to be a, a range, like we talked about before at the, at the last commission meeting as well. Uh, you, of that twenty, you know, in a sort of twenty-five to fifty percent kind of a range of the, uh, you know, for, for the reserve uh, target maintenance level uh, compared to the, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent of the annual budget. Seems to be a fairly typical practice out there. Uh, in the current case, you know, the, the, this is a small agency. The, the adopted budget for this fiscal year back in, so starting uh, in, in July and the, the annual budget that was adopted by this commission back in June uh, approved a, a, a pretty substantial increase, but the annual budget for this agency is, is about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So having the reserves be at approximately fifty percent of that would mean essentially a, a, a target amount of about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and that seems to be, you know, in the, i- in the typical range for a, a small agency like this. So it's more of an art than a science. There is no one right way or wrong way to do this.
I understand that, Darren.
Hmm.
What's the purpose of it? I mean, give me an example.
Well, for example, if there were to be some sort of an unfunded mandate from the state that starting from now on, LAFCOs need to uh, you know, expedite uh, MSRs and do them right away for all of the agencies. Or if the commission has a special project and a priority that the commission would like to direct staff to uh, really uh, drill, drill down on and, and, and put a lot of time and effort into, uh, that would be uh, an example. You know, litigation would be another example. Uh, not that there is anything pending or, you know, immediately, or you know, in any foreseeable horizon or anything like that. We have no reason to believe that there is, you know, any, any, anything taking form in that, uh, you know, in, in that regard, but.
But we would wanna reserve in there in the event that it happened.
Right. If we don't have anything like that, then basically if we do, if, if LAFCO does have unanticipated expenses, there really. there really isn't much recourse other than getting a loan from the county.
Yeah.
Excuse me. This board is put together by the three entities, right?
Yes.
The county and the two cities. If we are sued and we lose, say $100,000, which is nothing, wouldn't, wouldn't the three entities have to pick up that cost, not LAFCO?
Well, ultimately, yes. I mean, LAFCO in that situation acts as just kind of a pass through where like it does ultimately come from the, the two cities and the county.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner Casey.
It's pretty standard practice, so I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with the amount. I was thinking of another example, like if, for instance, we didn't do MSRs for way too many years and we wanted to catch up, we'd have some funds to actually, you know, hire a consultant to catch up. So that's a good use. I just was wondering what our new counsel thought as far as what he's, you've seen out there.
Yeah, actually, the one thing I was going to add as an unexpected occurrence was litigation, but Darren mentioned that. I mean, something we obviously try to avoid, but it's one of those things that when it does come, it can be a big cash crunch. So I would just say I think the proposal seems reasonable to what I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my only comment on this is if we do have also an influx of annexation applications, which I pray we don't, but if that happened...
No promises. I'm sorry.
I know, I know. And that's exactly why it's like to not have to go back to the agencies and have the flexibility of us being able to move forward with this, as you called it, kitty or contingency account. I just think it's a frugal thing to do. And I think the four fifths is really important. I wanted it to make, to make sure that four fifths, that's something that the board does of supervisors, but I don't think all agencies do four fifths vote. That's so we would have to be pretty united if we're going to be dipping into this.
Right.
Okay?
That makes sense.
Is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, that's a 5-0. I want to thank Commissioner Jordan for helping with this very extensive project that we had here. Okay, we're moving on to informational, which is 7.1. We're going to get an update from REO and make a brief announcement about LAFCO activities. And this is, there's no action required on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only item I have for you here is just today I've handed out some copies of a little memo I put together. This is my last scheduled meeting as your interim EO. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to this commission for having me as your temporary EO since April. It has gone by very quickly, but I think we have accomplished some, some good work here in just a few short months. Just for me as well, I think it has been a huge professional development experience and opportunity, requiring me to step outside of my usual world and, and broaden my horizons. I've, has been a good experience. I've really enjoyed getting to know all of you as well. And I think you should all be commended for your dedication and hard work for the communities that you serve. And with that, I very much look forward to staying in touch and hope to see you all at the Cal LAFCO Annual Conference very shortly next month in Monterey.
Okay, and were copies of this made at the back of the room for the public?
I'm seeing a yes there from Vanessa, so yes.
Okay, good, good. Just wanted to make sure that we had public copies there. I'm going to open it up to public comment and then we can bring it back to the commission.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And I have nobody on Zoom at this time. And I have no public comment.
I think we have one public comment.
That's how we curb the public comment, huh?
That's why I'm asking, is it in the back for the public?
I said that in jest, okay?
Just checking, no public comment in the chamber?
Give you mine, but they don't work for you. Just say thank you very much for your services.
Okay, we have one public comment.
Yeah, thank you for putting up with me, Darren. I really appreciate it. Thank you. You came on short notice and I did have some things to say about that. And I still have something to say about that. You're saying goodbye and we don't have anybody yet. So are we extending a contract for another month?
I'm going to say, coming back to the, the commission, I'm going to go first on this one. I was a little taken back by the memo when we have a closed session item and we haven't even discussed it yet. So please be prepared that if it's continued, we may have to extend your contract for a period of time. I know you're going to really miss us, but...
My people need me. Thank you for...
Yes, can I bring it back to the commission? Is there anything anybody would like to say?
I would.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. You, you did step in when we had a situation. And you and Kate both have brought a lot of expertise and helped us to get going when we were really struggling to get going. So thank you for all of that.
It's been a pleasure to serve and thank you, thank you all.
Darren, as far as I'm concerned, as Bea and I can attest to, you saved San Benito County LAFCO because we were dysfunctional for about five, six months until you came along and Monterey County. They really helped us out and I'd like, thank you for that.
Thank you very much, for sure.
I appreciate all the work that you put into this group. Having three new members, I think we heard a couple of stories about the prior LAFCO group. And I, for one, was a little nervous. I didn't know what to expect or where to go. And you set us on a path and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm going to have to say it's been a real pleasure working with you, Darren. You have been so detailed in your backups of backups of backups in case something went wrong. I, I can't thank you enough. And for all of the added meetings you had with me to be able to, being very new to LAFCO, to be able to just move us forward, it has been a real pleasure working with you. And I hope that I can thank you and Kate at Cal LAFCO. But please note that if, if we, whatever happens in closed session, you may have to stay a bit longer. I know you're needed elsewhere.
We reserve the right?
Yeah, we reserve the right, right? Are we unanimous on that? I think we reserve the right, so...
I'm honored. Thank you very much for the kind words. Really appreciate it.
Okay, so we're going to move on to 7.2, Commissioners' Announcements and Requests for Future Agenda Items. Do we have public comment on this before we...
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And I have no one on Zoom and I have no public comment.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Any comments?
Just something brief. So I hadn't initially planned to go to Cal LAFCO, but then as I realized how much I didn't know, I'm going to be there, so I hope to see you all there.
Great. Other comments? No, good. Commissioner Bentoncourt?
I've been asked by a small group of people to update them on what LAFCO is. And I kind of bowed out of that because, yeah, I do know the code, but I have to refresh my memory all the time. But I think that there might be a new... I hope our Jennifer, I think that's her name, Stevenson, on the MSRs, she's having that, that's why I asked her if it was open to the public because I'd like to invite our group to come to that meeting so that they can learn what an MSR is. And also reading the MSRs, the code, she's going to be a busy lady because it has to come back to be reviewed every five years. So she can't just catch up on all of them. Then she's got to come back in five years.
Yep.
So, and hopefully issues like the hospital won't come up if we're responsible for doing the MSRs appropriately.
I'm going to make a suggestion. Jennifer had done that PowerPoint presentation. Did that get, I'm not sure if Jennifer's still on, did that get emailed out to all the commissioners? Is that something that we could read forward to Commissioner Bentoncourt that you could share with individuals to give them the kind of flavor of the beginning? And then once they come into the public meetings, they'll have a little better idea? That's, that's my only suggestion on that one.
Well, the new executive officer, I think, Elliot, had a town hall meeting, I guess you would call it, up at Ridgemarke that she put on with Bill Nicholson and all the city folks, the planning commissioners, everybody was involved to update them on, on LAFCO code. Ie, the general plan, I've read it online, but that should be brought before this, this body.
I imagine it will be at some point.
You're changing the...
Sphere of influence?
It absolutely has to come before LAFCO at that point, when, when it's finalized. We're not finalized yet. It's still, still being revised, so...
What happens if we have issues with what you're doing?
You do what you do at LAFCO and you review it. It's, that's part of the process, right? Separate process from ours.
Yes, absolutely. Same thing with San Juan.
And same thing with San Benito.
Yeah.
There you go.
We all bring it back to this...
We don't have anything to do with the county.
We don't have the county outside lines, but we do have some zoning areas, I believe, with CSAs that will have to come back in the general plan and the CFDs. Yep.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, well, I appreciate that and I have no future agenda items. I'm looking forward to potentially having a new executive officer so we can maybe think about doing another workshop like what Commissioner Bentoncourt is talking about. Because I think a continuous outreach and education with the community would be very beneficial. So thank you for doing that in the past and we will hopefully continue that for the future. Okay. We are now done with informational and we are going to move to closed session. Are there any public comments regarding closed session? Do you need to announce closed session item based on government code, Darren? Or Josh, I don't know who announces on closed session?
Yeah, we do need to provide public comment and then we'll announce when we get out.
Okay, great.
Okay, if you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. And I have no one on Zoom and we have Ms. Alina.
Yes, good afternoon. So I read the memo or the information and it is a little different than the title of the agenda because the agenda says "public employee appointment." And it seems, by the way, and I know you had a deadline, I know Darren had a deadline, but... And the way counts, the commissioners are speaking, you've made it like an assumption that someone has already been selected. Because you're, you're needing to, it's, the presumption is that you're needing to have someone before the next meeting. And I don't want anybody selected because you feel like you're being pressured. I am, would, were the ratings that were performed on the candidates just based on submissions? Or were there any in-person interviews? And I don't know if you can answer that question or not, but I haven't heard from any, you know, so people have been talking. There was a comment from one of the departments that there had already been an appointment and that the appointment was a specific gender and you know how people speak and all that stuff. So I, we're talking about transparency here, folks, okay?
We're going to hold off until we're done with public comment.
I also have Diana Serrano.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Diana Serrano, as stated. And I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to become your next executive officer. The reasons to hire me, quite simple. If you are looking for someone who has experience in running an office, creating policies, I'm right here. If you are looking for someone who has LAFCO knowledge and can start processing applications and completing service reviews, I'm right here. And if you want someone with longevity and won't be retiring until 30 years from now, I'm right here. I understand the temporary assistance from Darren is over in a few days, but my long-term commitment to this LAFCO can start as early as tomorrow. And based on my relationships with neighboring LAFCOs, that type of shared services will continue under my leadership. I am ready to take San Benito LAFCO to the next level of efficiency, productivity and value. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I have no other public comment. Oh, just kidding. And I have Joe Serrano.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, my name is Joe Serrano. I'm the executive officer for Santa Cruz LAFCO. More importantly, I am Diana's husband and I just want to formally endorse her consideration to be your next executive officer. Just a little bit of background on myself, I have 15 years of LAFCO experience. Almost half my life has been dedicated to LAFCO. And the Cal LAFCO has entrusted me to train new LAFCO employees and commissioners at annual conferences. During the last two years, I have been the, the main person to provide that training. Diana has that 24/7 training and no cost to this commission. We, you, you've been talking about service reviews. I have become an expert in writing service reviews. For example, we talked about the wastewater agencies. Santa Cruz County has 10 wastewater agencies and I analyzed them in one service review back in 2019 that led to some improvements of those agencies. To give you another example, last year I analyzed 40 agencies in separate service reviews. And I'm, and I wrote those services in-house. Santa Cruz LAFCO has 80 agencies and I have developed a schedule that analyzes those agencies within every five years, as one of your commissioners mentioned. Diana wants to replicate that productivity and that efficiency here in San Bernito, San Benito County. So I, I really feel that she has the opportunity to take this commission to the next level. I want her, she wants this commission to be one of the best LAFCOs in the state. She's determined to take you to that next level. And I'm determined to make her one of the most, the best or one of the best executive officers in the state. So you have that young hunger from both of us to make San Benito LAFCO successful. So with that, I appreciate your opportunity to consider her hiring. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
I have no other public comment.
I'd like to just state one thing for the record, that the ad hoc only reviewed the applications. All applicants are coming to closed session. We did not do any interviews and we have not met with any of the applicants. So this is all closed session review.
And we have not selected anyone, so let's get that, let's get rid of that rumor.
Yeah, we have not selected anyone. And it's the commission to do the selection, not us. We're just ranking. Okay, with that, we're going to move into closed session.
Are there anybody out in the hall still, or no?
No.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay, so how do you want to do that? Okay, so we'll put in that conversation when we come out. You will report out and then advise us that we make that motion. Keeping me on my toes.
Oh, my word. I get the seat by the fireplace next time.
Okay. Action. Are we good? Okay, we're returning from closed session. And it is 5:29. Counsel, would you like to report out?
Yes, we do have reportable action. The Commission, by unanimous vote, has appointed Policy Consulting Associates, LLC, as the executive director, subject to approval of a contract.
Okay, and I understand that in order to do this, we have to call a special board meeting?
And that's correct. So to make sure that we have the contract approved before the end of the month, staff is requesting that the Commission, considering adjourning to a regular meeting, which will, you know, be very similar to a special meeting, prior to the end of the month to have a formal vote on the agreement. And we could pick a date that's convenient for the Commission.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners on an availability of a date. I know, I'm sorry to do this to you.
And we're talking September, correct?
Okay, we've got one totally available person right now from the Commission. I'm going to say next week is impossible.
Yeah, the 21st will not work for me.
Nothing next week will work for me.
Monday?
Monday, the 25th?
I'm still in Penn State.
Okay.
Football game.
Priorities.
Tuesday, I have council meeting.
I have board meeting. I'm available Wednesday.
I am after 3:30.
Yeah, I can do morning or after 3:30.
I can do morning or afternoon.
I can do morning before 2:00.
I could do the morning before 5:00 a.m., but...
Commissioner Gonzalez, I'm going to say no to that.
I second that note?
Yeah, that Wednesday will work for me, sorry.
Thursday, I am free after 10:00.
You have a groundbreaking at 11:00.
I have a groundbreaking at 11:00, apparently. Thank you very much for that.
Oh, yes, you do.
I think that's the 29th.
That's the 29th.
The 29th?
Oh, the 29th. So the 28th, you're available after 10:00.
Yes, 28th after 10:00 and 29th in the afternoon.
I'm not available on the 28th at all.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm really sorry. I'm available the morning of the 29th.
8 o'clock?
I can reschedule what I have if 8 o'clock. If not, it would be like 9:30 or 10:00.
Is it pickleball?
No, it's not pickleball.
It's not pickleball.
No, in the morning.
On which day? The 29th?
You don't get up till 9:00? Okay, would you get up for us?
8 o'clock's a little difficult for me, because I might be able to get someone else to drop children.
Can we do 9 on the 29th?
As long as I can be back in San Juan by 11:00.
By 11:00, yeah, I agree.
I'd have to be there at 11:00.
Well, I don't think this is going to take a long time, right? We're going to be reviewing one contract and that's it, right?
We anticipate a very short meeting. That's correct.
9 to 9:30.
9 o'clock on the 29th?
That would work.
Okay, I think we've got a date and a time. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned. It is 5:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you.